I'd like to call the Oregon Board of Education organizational meeting to order. Today is January ninth, two thousand twenty-five at five P. M. We are being streamed live on the YouTube channel. We have the Pledge of Allegiance and a quick moment of silence. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Can we have the roll call, please?
Sorry, Mr. Shea?
President.
Mr. Eversman?
Here.
Mr. Sadek?
Here.
Mr. Zavisky?
Here. Need a motion to adopt the agenda as written?
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Sadek?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Next, we'll enter the election of the officers. I ask for nominations. Seconds are not required, so I won't be asking for a second. Once we're not the president, we'll move on to the VP. So currently nominations are in order for the president. Do we have any nominations?
Motion to have Carol Monarch, the president, again?
We have a nomination for Carol Monarch for president. Is there any other nomination for president of Oregon School Boards? Hearing none, I'll close the nominations. Can we have a roll call, Mrs. Ruth?
Yes. Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Sadek?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes. And we're now nominations are in order for the officer vice president of the school board. Do we have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Dan Sadek, please.
Are there any other nominations for vice president of the board? Hearing none, I'll close nominations for that office. And can we have a roll call, please?
Um, Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
And Mr. Sadek?
Yes.
That concludes our election process. I want to congratulate Ms. Monarch. She's not here tonight. She's been on the board, if I believe, fifteen, seventeen years. Half of those, I think, the last half has been the president, leading this board and this district. So on behalf of the board, I want to congratulate her for her endless dedication to not only leading the board, leading the district. She's done a great job for us. Looking forward to that continue. Congratulations, Mr. Sadek, for the vice president. And at this time, I turn the gavel over to you for the rest of the meeting.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Zavisky, and Happy New Year, everyone. It's great to be back for the second half of the school year. Should be another great one for Oregon City Schools. Uh, new business on the organizational meeting agenda is to review the board's ethical policy. You each received a copy of that. I will read it very quickly. The board believes public education should be conducted in an ethical manner. In addition to state law, the conduct of board members should conform to the Code of Ethics recommended by the Ohio School Boards Association, which includes the following: It is unethical for a board member to seek special privileges for personal gain, personally assume unauthorized authority, criticize employees publicly, disclose confidential information, place the interest of one individual, group, or community above the interest of the entire district, withhold facts from the superintendent particularly about the incompetency of an employee and/or other individual, announce future action before a proposition has been discussed by the board. Asking the board to review and acknowledge this policy at the organizational meeting. Do we need a vote on this? We do not. Okay. We will move on to motion to approve resolution approving standing authorizations for the calendar year twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five. This was previously distributed to the board members, and what this was designed to do was to give Dr. Fritz and Mrs. Ruth the opportunity to go ahead and enter into standard-type contracts as needed. And at this time, we will entertain a motion to approve that new policy.
So moved.
A motion, a second, please?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions that any board members have regarding this? Dr. Fritz, can you just, for the folks, general public, let us, let everybody know a little bit about the thought process behind that?
Yes. Thank you. Ultimately, standing authorizations are put in place that allows us to, to function on behalf of the board until the board meets the next time. And allows us to approve certain items per board policy in, in the absence of the board being the president at that time. But ultimately, we bring these things back to the board and have the board prove them unless board policy says otherwise. These are things that we did standard in my previous districts for many years, and I feel it's necessary to have this, just to give us some flexibility, because the board doesn't meet every day, obviously, and we need that flexibility in order to keep the business of the, of the district moving forward.
Thank you very much. Any other, any questions? Mrs. Ruth, phone, please.
All right. Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Sadek?
Yes. All right. Item C under new business in the organizational meeting, the resolution, which is a continuation of the board's service fund for the twenty-twenty-five fiscal year as appropriated last November as provided by the Ohio Revised Code, Section thirty-three fifteen dot fifteen. So that is a resolution to continue that. Again, I believe with a resolution, we do not need to approve that. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, we do need to.
We do need to approve that. Okay. Thank you very much. Is there a, a motion on the floor to approve that resolution, please?
So moved.
No motions?
Second?
Second.
Second. Any questions? Mrs. Ruth?
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Sadek?
Yes. Item D, legal counsel appointment. It is recommended that we continue using the following legal counsel: Spangler-Nathanson, Dinsmore &amp; Scholl LLC, Ferger-Greitner LLP, and Weston-Hurd. Entertaining a motion to approve that, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. Any questions regarding that?
Quick question, Mrs. Ruth. Weston-Hurd, is that new? Is that something?
That, um, that is our, um, he used to be with, oh, I'm having a brain freeze. We've been using it for years. He went to a new firm.
Eric Johnson.
It's Eric Johnson.
Okay.
We did negotiations with last time.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Mrs. Ruth, roll call, please.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Sadek?
Yes. Item E, public records training. The Board of Education appoints the treasurer, CFO, Jane Ruth, as its designated for public records training. Final item, uh, uh, F, do we want to, do we, again, refresh my memory in this, do we need to, we need to vote on that as well? Okay. Thank you. Motion, please?
So moved.
Item? So moved, second?
Second.
Uh, we have a first and a second. Any questions from the board? Roll call, Mrs. Ruth, please.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Sadek?
Yes. All right. Date, time, and schedule for regular meetings. The regular meetings have been scheduled for the twenty-twenty-five school year and will be available on the district website. Our next meeting will be coming up at the end of February, and we will announce that date at the conclusion of our regular, regularly scheduled meeting. Are there any other items for the organizational meeting for the board, please? On, on the board time, are we still talking the third Tuesday at six o'clock?
Yes.
Correct. Yes. Yes. Third Tuesday.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to close the organizational meeting of January the ninth.
So moved. Second.
We have a first and a second. Roll call, Mrs. Ruth.
Um, Mr. Shea?
Good.
Was that you, Mr. Eversman, the second?
Yes.
Excuse me. I can only see, um, Mr. Zavisky?
Yeah.
And Mr. Sadek?
Yes. This concludes the organizational meeting of the Oregon Schools Board of Education. We will now move into the regular meeting of the Board of Education meeting. We have already got our Pledge of Allegiance and our Moment of Silence and our roll call of the board. We want to remind everyone who is with us to please silence all personal electronic devices during this evening's meeting. Motion at this time to enter, to adopt the agenda as written?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We have a first and a second on that. Any questions? Mrs. Ruth?
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Sadek?
Mr. Sadek, yes. I thank you all very much. Next item on the regular meeting agenda is our staff community recognition presentation. Dr. Fritz?
Thank you. First, I want to thank you for all that you do. I have a short statement to read. At your seats, you have a certificate recognizing your time and the dedication to the students and, and the staff and this community. So I'm going to read this statement. As we celebrate Board of Education Appreciation Month, I want to take a moment to personally thank each and every one of our board members for their dedication, leadership, and commitment to our students, staff, and schools. Our Board of Education members work hard, often behind the scenes, to ensure that our district remains focused on providing high-quality education and creating an environment where every child can succeed. Whether making critical decisions, supporting staff, or engaging with the community, they serve as advocates for our students, staff, the district, and our mission. The work of the board is not always an easy one, and at times it requires difficult decisions. Their service is always grounded in what is what, in what is best for our students, staff, and community. On behalf of the entire district, our students, teachers, staff, and families, we want to say thank you to you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Fritz, and I think the public in Oregon can rest easily knowing that you have a board that's very committed to what's best for the children of this district as well as our community as a whole. And as, as one of their peers, I am very proud to serve with this really outstanding, outstanding board. And, you know, we hear so many stories about other districts having boards with, maybe take their eye off of all. This board is definitely not them. This is an excellent board, and I think everyone in our community can be very proud of the representation that's been elected to serve on behalf of our community. Public participation at board meetings, Mrs. Ruth, do we have any cards?
I have no cards.
Please be advised that this meeting is being audiotaped and will be available on the district website. Treasures report, Mrs. Ruth.
All right. Mr. Sadek, thank you. Okay. First, to start, there will be no updated per appropriation measure. I have a brief report, I promise. I, I provided you with the, these valuation adjustments last month. You know, I, I think this isn't going to make anybody feel better, but, because people are getting their tax bills. But, you know, we had very high, um, classified, I'm sorry, real estate valuation increases. Residential average was thirty-one, almost thirty-two percent. Below, I provided, I didn't just, I think last week or early this week, got the final millage, the final effective millage rates from Lucas County. And I just put a little shot here of, you know, we have voted millage for class one, which is real estate, residential real estate. The voted for general fund only is sixty-two point nine-five mils. Effective is twenty-six point nine-nine, and that's a nineteen point six reduction. I know it doesn't feel like it, but it does roll back, except for the inside millage. So, and we did also, and it's not part of this, and then I showed the twenty-twenty-four reappraisal. It's always an inverse relationship between values and millage. I know it doesn't feel like it, but I just want to remind people. We also did have a one-mil roll-off on our bond because of the growth in valuation. And up above, under the changes, I do want you to see this is what one-mil will bring in now in our district, just for informational purposes, no other reason. We did then, flipping over, we did receive, and there's a lot of information that we could study later, because I, I know it's, I, maybe a lot of figures, but some observations. The cup report is, at the end of the year, the state takes our financial data and compares it to similar districts, state, entire state. And then I do a little, in the very, very back, you'll see all of our districts that we tend to pair ourselves to, mostly Lucas County plus Perrysburg. It's on the very back. So what I've done is, I think, I have this little report that shows the revenue by source. And I, my only point in putting this here is to point out that every school in the state, let alone Lucas County, has a different story, and it makes it hard to come up with a good solution for school funding. You can see Toledo Public gets a lot more federal revenue than we do. You can see which districts reply very, I'm sorry, rely very heavily on local revenue as gray. You know, who gets more state. And of course, it's all based on valuations per pupil and federal income tax, median income tax within the community. Just something to keep in mind. I'm making my, it's becoming a monthly statement, that the fair school funding is the best attempt so far, but without increases, it does cause some problems, and it pushes a lot of the local taxpayers. And you could see with different districts how it affects communities differently. I've got another graph showing the cost per pupil. This is for last fiscal year. Sometimes I, I just want to, I've put a little statement below showing that Oregon, Sylvania, Washington Local, and Toledo, we are what they call comprehensive schools. That does figure into our cost per pupil, so I just always make sure everybody knows that. No real statement here, but that's just cost per pupil comparative. And I like to look at relationships of perceived wealth, which in our formula is always going to be valuation per pupil and average. In this case, federal average income, and they also use median, there's all, you know, but in this case, I pulled the federal average. I used our local areas. You can see where we fall for our valuation per pupil. And it's interesting, yeah. So it takes more, you'll have to have a higher millage rate, the lower your valuation per pupil is. So it's, it's, it all plays into the formula. You can see what we get on the average in federal. You can see our expenditures per pupil and where we rank in the average salary. So just information. Then my normal report, you know, I have, it was up in the Google Docs. I did the true cash review for you all. And we're still, we are, of course, still deficit spending, but we do have a strong cash position with one hundred and sixty-nine true cash days, when the department always recommends between sixty to ninety. So we still have a strong position. Couple missed, oh, I already told you, we don't need the current appropriation measure. And we did get a final clean audit report, so that's getting, well, that was sent to the state, so that's done. And obviously, we want the Buckeyes to win against the Longhorns, so that's just my point. So unless there are questions?
You guys have a big bet on that one?
No, 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 no. You know, I don't have a bet. It's just, I know, I shouldn't have put it on. Okay. Go Bucks. That's all. So unless there are questions, that is my report.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Ruth? Congratulations, Mrs. Ruth, on the clean audit. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve the Chargers' report as presented.
Yep. So moved, minus item C, which she said is not needed.
Second on that, that adjustment?
Second.
Roll call, Mrs. Ruth.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
And Mr. Sadek?
Yes. Executive session, the board, at the conclusion of this meeting, will enter into an executive session for the purpose of the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee or official we will dismiss from that meeting. Consent agenda items, A and B, are there any items that the members of the board wish to pull from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing none, a motion is needed to vote on the consent agenda items. Motion, please?
So moved.
Second? I'll second. Any other discussion? Mrs. Ruth?
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Sadek?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yeah.
Mr. Shea?
Moving to item ten, new business. Clay High School Student Handbook, additional language. Motion to approve additional language of the Clay High School Handbook for Ohio State Test and CT Webzam Incentives. Motion, please?
So moved.
Motion, a second, please?
Second.
Motion and a second. Questions from the board? Roll call, Mrs. Ruth, please.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Sadek?
Yes. New business, donations. Motion to accept the following donations. Noel Graham, second, donated two thousand dollar, two thousand dollars to Win Center. A motion, please, to accept that generous gift.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, Mrs. Ruth.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Eversman?
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky?
Yes.
And Mr. Sadek?
Yes. Superintendent's report, Dr. Fritz?
Thank you. I'm going to talk about three different items, and I'll do it very quickly. How legislative update, you know, they were very, the legislature was very active in the lame duck session this past holiday season. They sent twenty-nine bills to the governor and had him sign those. Three of them right now, you know, House Bill Eight, which is the parental notification requirements release time for religious instruction, House Bill Two-O-Six, which deals with expulsions, Senate Bill Two-O-Eight, open enrollment policies, educational provisions. There's, there's some other policies that we're waiting to see the final wording of, but I'll be presenting information to the administrators on Thursday of next week, providing them with an update of that. And I will give you more information based on that update that I provided them, because there are, there are some significant changes that we'll have to have in place through some board action because of board policies, as well as some things that will just go into effect that we'll have to, 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 to deal with moving forward over the next four or five months, because some of them happen soon and some of them are delayed based on the language in, in what was approved through the legislature. So more to come on that. The Ohio Legislature put together a joint property tax study committee. I want to mention this because right now, they have submitted a report that they had to put together by the end of December, and I just want to briefly talk about that. There were ten legislators on that, six Republicans, four Democrats, and there were twenty-one recommendations provided in that final report. There's really two camps in, in, in the group and based on the recommendations. The first group, they want notes, state tax dollars spent, but they want a reduction in real estate taxes. They want the locals, like school districts, local governments, to bear the burden of the reduced revenue that we would see. And they also want to see that there's a uniform reduction in real estate. So if you own a two-million-dollar home, you get the same percentage reduction as somebody who owns a hundred-thousand-dollar home. And there's another group that wants a reduction in real estate taxes, but they want the state to help offset and or totally offset the loss to local governments or to local school districts, or public school districts. And that, that tax relief be targeted specifically to low and middle-income Ohioans and also senior citizens. So you have two, those two different groups that were back and forth on what we should do. And I think you're going to see all this play out over the next six months through the legislature, whether it be individual legislation and/or through the state budget bill, because the state budget bill will be something that will be a vehicle for many different things by the time we get to June. So there's going to be, what we're hearing, over twenty bills proposed in the next couple of months with property tax relief. So, you know, and I'm, you live in Lucas County, we're all, right now, looking at our tax bills that are due here in January going, what happened? You know, it's, it's a significant increase. And so they're hearing from us, they're hearing from other counties that just went through that as well, and even last year as well. So they're hearing a lot about the, the need for tax, property tax reduction. It's just how do we get there? And what makes sense for the state of Ohio? What makes sense for local governments? What makes sense for public school districts? And how we, how we get there? But I shared some information with you about what they're looking at as far as those recommendations. I'll keep you apprised of what's going on, because we're really concerned. We're going to try to advocate, obviously, for this district and public school districts across the state to make sure that we do not see a reduction in real estate tax incomes, because it can be significant, that if it's a reduction for homeowners, then, then somehow we're subsidized at that same rate of reduction, so that we don't see a loss there. Because as Mrs. Ruth has shown you, we have a significant percentage of money coming in locally, and we need that to be maintained. State budget, so we're hearing that the last week of January, the governor will come out and do his, his talk about his budget and present it to the legislature, and then it goes through a process over the next five months of going through the House, going through the Senate, joint committees determining what the final bill is going to be, then they send it to the governor. The governor can approve everything or veto parts of it and so forth, and that typically happens by the end of June, because the budget ends June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-five. And they probably will go to the wire, like they always do, and we'll see where that goes. The one thing that I'm very concerned about, though, as now the new House Speaker, Matt Huffman, was, was elected, I want to share with you some of his comments. He shared that for the Fair School Funding Plan, he, in quote, said, "Spending increases are unsustainable." I'm concerned about that, because, you know, part of the Fair School Funding Plan, there's a mechanism in there for increases in that plan, because we're still being funded based on about four years ago and what they felt we should be funded at for certain parts, not even all of it, because they really just got the report back on special education costs, transportation costs, and we know we're not going to see any increases there. So my guess is that will be either flatlined, or we'll see a reduction in, in that funding. But we'll wait and see. You know, I, I'm concerned, because if, if the Speaker of the House is saying that, you know, that's significant, and we know he's very much in favor of charters in private schools and increasing funding for them, because there is discussion about that being in the budget as it gets to its final stages in, in June. So we're going to continue to monitor, monitor that and advocate for public schools moving forward. Any questions on that information? I'll plan to monthly keep you very updated on where it's at, what we're hearing, you know, and how we're going to advocate for, for most of these schools.
So what we're hearing is that there's going to, there will be a lot of variables involving financing for the district that hopefully will work their way through the system here in the next year to give us a better idea of where we are and where we're going, depending on how things happen in Columbus and locally.
And federally, we're hearing that there will be an increase on the federal level for vouchers, some way, somehow, whether it be through tax credits and/or directly funding. So that can be significant, depending on how they adjust our funding.
Any questions for Dr. Fritz? Thank you very much. All right. Old business, do we have any old business to discuss? As mentioned earlier, we will move into the executive session. We will dismiss from, uh, the executive session at that time. Should be a very short, uh, meeting. Um, our next regularly scheduled meeting is February the 18th at 6:00 PM. Uh, as far as a work session, uh, folks, uh, the week of the 3rd or the week of the 10th, uh, you know, what's your pleasure? Do you have any thoughts?
What week?
The week of the 3rd or the week of the 10th?
February 10th.
Oh, either, either we, we got four days each week.
I'd say the 4th.
You can or cannot do the 4th.
No, I say, I, bottom tier, the 4th is...
Okay.
Start the discussion. You know, it's a Tuesday.
Fourth?
I'm okay with that.
How does that look for everybody at this table? Jeff, you're good? Uh, Jeff, sincerely, a lone working employee, do you have a preferred meeting time, 5:00? Oh, that's right, you're working too. I forgot about that. Sorry about that.
My shift hasn't come in yet. I was at the airport the last time.
There we go.
5:00, 5:00.
5:00. Very good. Mike, is 5:00 okay for you?
Oh, okay.
No, I won't be able to do the 4th.
Okay. You cannot do the 4th. Is there another date that would work for everybody?
Would the 3rd work?
The 3rd would work.
The 3rd would work?
The 3rd would work.
What is that, the 3rd at 5:00?
5:00, 3rd. Can I push it back to 5:30 for me?
5:30? 5:30? Does that work okay for you, Jerry? 5:30, everybody here comfortable with that? Okay, so we will have a work session on Tuesday, February the...
Monday.
Monday, excuse me, Monday, February the 3rd at 5:30 PM at the Board of Education Building. At this time, we'll entertain a motion. I'm sorry.
Can you skip over board discussion and just have...
Yeah, I'm sorry. My apologies. So board discussion?
I could. Like I said, Dr. Fritz, I appreciate your comment on the, um, the board and board appreciation month, but I did want to, um, just take a second to kind of publicly thank you. We've all been kind of, I'll say spoiled with, um, with, with, how Gregory Superintendent did a great job, uh, let us do some stuff, but, you know, when time comes for a change, you know, it's scary. You know, it could be good, could be bad. In this case, I think we had a home run with you. Um, I, I personally love the, um, the updates that you continually give us, insight on different perspectives going on in the district with your experience, um, within the state,